Hi everybody, my name's Zug, otherwise known as Pat Crane. I am the GM of the CTR Guild System on Aerie Peak. And welcome to another fine CTR Guild Town Hall meeting. This is where we discuss what's going on with the guild. It's a chance for you guys to kind of ask questions along the way too. And figure out what's going on with the guild, figure out what's, uh, what, uh... I don't know, it's kind of our chance to kind of get in front of you guys and have you guys ask us what you want to ask us about guild stuff particularly. And for those guys that are new to the guild, we welcome you wholeheartedly and we hope that you're having fun here. For those guys that have been around forever, we love the support that you guys have given us throughout your time with us. And it's been quite a long time, as we'll talk about in a minute, as Tur Arts will talk about momentarily. But it's been a hell of almost three years with the guild. And it's really great to see this community continue to thrive even though like we're in a lull period. But you wouldn't know it because we have 7,200 active characters in the guild. So that is amazing. And we're starting to see all these other things where teams are giving away these, doing the moose runs. And those are amazing too. If you want to get a moose mount, you don't have to go very far. Because not only, Spencer, what's your team's name? I'm sorry.
Working as intended.
Working as intended is doing it. Convert to Mythic is doing it. There are other teams around the guild that are doing this. And maybe Nate will have some more information as we get onto raid stuff toward the end of the, uh, of our time here. But, um, but thank you guys for your continued support of the guild. And I hope that you and yours have a very happy holiday, happy Winter Vale, happy New Year, and a great 2016 as we move into that. So tonight, we're gonna talk about the guild events. Tur Arts is gonna come on and talk about guild events. And like I said, we've got some big event coming up. And then we're gonna have Ursangus talk about the greeters and about, um, and about the welcome committee for the guild. Those first people that you, that you talk to upon entering the guild. It's, um, uh, the frontline of the CTR Guild. Uh, and then we'll talk about raid stuff at the end. And then we'll be able to field your questions, whatever those may be. Okay, here we go. So I'm just gonna turn it over because I've said enough over the course of the last however many minutes. Um, so I want to introduce Tur Arts. If you don't know Tur Arts, Tur Arts is the lead event person for the guild, director of events maybe? Would you, would you consider yourself a director of events?
I like that. I don't think we've done a title yet, so I just usually win it.
Everybody needs a title, come on. Uh, so, uh, Director of Events, Tur Arts. Uh, why don't you take it away and talk to us about what's happening, uh, coming up?
Yeah, so for events, if you've been watching the calendar, it's been a little lackluster lately. Goodness, words, fun. Um, but that is because we have a big event coming up. We are reaching our three-year anniversary. Um, and we're actually celebrating this. If you've been to them before, you know we do a week-long celebration. Um, if this is your first one, awesome, you know, welcome to the guild the past year. We will be doing this January 17th to the 24th with our actual anniversary following on the 20th. So it's been three amazing years so far. Hard to believe it's gone so quick.
Yeah.
Um, for events, a couple, just to highlight on, um, we do a raffle every year. One signup per person, everyone gets a prize. Um, that signup will be on the calendar tomorrow. Wanted to announce it here first before we got it up. Uh, there'll be a link, you'll do a Google Doc signup, everything's good to go. Um, and then we'll announce the prizes during that week. We also have a guild gift exchange. It's kind of like a secret Santa, a fun way to get to know a guildie. Um, we've done that every year too. We also are looking at doing some things outside of WoW because even though we're WoW guild, um, you know, expanding isn't a bad thing, change is good. So a Hearthstone tournament has been tossed around as well as a Heroes tournament. And we'll have more information on that as we get closer. Um, if you want to help out, you know, you have an idea for an event, let me know. CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com is the email for that. Otherwise, you can get ahold of me in-game, TurArts, T-U-R-A-R-T-S. We can also use donations for the raffle and everything like that. And again, email or get ahold of me in-game and we can talk. Otherwise, I just added three new event planners. However, I will be looking for more. Um, this time around, I'm kind of looking for event planners who have experience in streaming and hosting tournaments. Um, because like I said, even though we're WoW guild, we're looking at expanding. So we'll be doing probably some more Hearthstone stuff, some more Hero stuff. When Overwatch gets released, we'll probably be dabbling in that a bit too. So if you have experience in either hosting tournaments or you've participated in a ton and you want to help out, let me know. Um, because yeah, we'll be looking for more.
Uh, yeah, and, and I think that was kind of one of the big things that we talked about, Tur Arts, was just that, you know, with esports being a big thing for Blizzard, it only seems appropriate that, um, we kind of try to offer that a little bit, as best we can anyway, um, to the CTR Guild and, and figure out, you know, how we can have fun outside of WoW maybe, uh, as well as inside WoW. So, uh, that'll be a nice, that'll be a nice change of pace. And then that way, we can also invite our Horde friends over. Cause I know that there are some that they don't want to play Alliance. And that's fine, that's cool. That's alright, I'll see you on the battlefield. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, this way we can play with anybody really, which is great. So, should be fun, should be fun going into the future, so. Um, alright, anything, so CTR Guild Events, correct?
Yep, CTR Guild Events with an S.
At gmail.com.
Correct.
And that's if you want to, if you're, if you have a tournament experience and you want to offer up some help or if you have some other ideas, if you want to become an events person, you can always, you know, just email Tur Arts over at CTRGuildEvents@gmail.com. Uh, okay, next up, we have, from the welcome committee, we have Ursangus. Ursangus.
Hey, that's me.
That is you. How are the greeters doing? How's, how's everything on your end of things?
So, for those of you guys who don't know me, my name is Ursangus. I kind of like the director thing, uh, the director of the welcome committee. I might steal that from you, Tur Arts. Uh, so, the welcome committee's doing fantastic right now, guys. We have a fantastic staff on hand, something like 25 dedicated greeters who are there to help you guys out. Um, I am going through a round of applications right now. We'll be hiring about four upcoming up. I am always looking for more help, especially with the expansion right around the corner. Uh, but I did want to honestly kind of take time for just a second to congratulate one of our veteran greeters. By name of Carmingia, and I know I butchered your name.
Carmen Gia.
Thank you. Carmen Gia has been with us since the beginning and she has stuck out with the welcome committee this entire time. Uh, so, congratulations, congratulations to her, just amazing job. A couple, a couple things real fast, guys, I wanted to make mention of. Uh, if you need to bring an alt into the guild, you do not need to apply again. Uh, just join the CTR LFO channel and ask for a greeter and they'll help you out. Uh, the other thing I would say is, as always, make sure to thank whoever brings you in, whoever you're talking to. Uh, these guys do the work they do out of love for the community. And it's always nice to hear appreciation. And if, if you don't get the chance to thank them, send us an email. Uh, send me an email, send us an email to the CTROfficers@gmail.com or you can reach me, Ursangus@gmail.com.
Alrighty, anything, anything else going on?
Uh, no, we will be doing another round of applicants here in, I'd say about two months. Uh, looking for some prime people.
Cool, awesome, awesome. And, uh, and you know, that is, that is our frontline. They do some, they do some hard work over there. Uh, and yeah, if you have, if you have a tune, uh, already in the guild and you want another tune in the guild, just go into CTR LFO, just like you did the first time. You don't have to worry about the app. One app will rule them all, as I like to say. Um, and, uh, yeah, so. And if you were, if you were in the guild and you got booted out, you don't have to apply again. No, just come, come on in. We've got the data, we've got the data, so we can, we can pull up your app and everything's cool. So, there.
Yep, everybody be groovy.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, let's talk some raiding, uh, and let's talk about raid teams and all that kind of stuff. Nate, um, it's been, it's been busy lately, hasn't it? It's like picked up again, it's like revived.
It has picked up a little bit. And I'm pleasantly surprised to see, uh, we've had a lot of new teams form, uh, in the last couple weeks and, about the last month. So, uh, guys, if you're out there and you're looking for a raid team, um, hit up the guild website, guild convert to raid.com. Uh, sign in, go through your My CTR, find a raid team. Um, we are still working on getting a kind of user guide up and running and together for you for the raid builder. Um, it's, it's still on my list of things to do. It's just been, it's been crazy last few months, so I just have not gotten to it. Um, on that note, I have hired a new raid liaison. Um, so I would like to take an opportunity to congratulate and welcome Major Death to the raid liaison team.
Yay!
Um, he's gonna be helping us out, he's gonna be taking over a few raid teams from us. Um, he's also gonna be helping me out with, uh, writing said guide for the raid builder. Um, as well as we have a few other things, uh, in mind for him to work on, uh, once he gets situated. I'm gonna be getting him situated over the next week or so. Um, so he'll be helping, he'll be helping out, you'll be seeing him out and about. Um, so feel free to say hi, uh, to him. Um, other thing, I have not put this on the calendar yet, but I will do that in the next few days. Um, we're gonna start doing some semi-frequent, and I don't know if we're gonna do this monthly or every other month yet. Kind of depends on turnout and interest, so we'll just play it by ear as we go. But, we're gonna start doing raid liaison open forums. Um, this, they will be kind of somewhat frequent meetings for you guys to come and ask questions about, uh, raiding in general, raiding in the Convert to Raid Guild, um, just to kind of get your questions answered. Um, and to have some one-on-one time with me to ask questions, give me feedback, um, on being raiders and raid leaders in this guild, um, so that we can do a better job of trying to meet your guys' needs. Um, so the first one we're gonna do, we're gonna schedule for Wednesday, January 13th. At, we're gonna do 6pm server and I'll have that up on the guild calendar as well, uh, this week. Um, in the future, we'll kind of bounce days and times around, so if you can't make it for this one, don't worry about it. Um, we'll try to catch a better time for you in the next meeting. Um, I'll have details on the calendar and stuff on how you can submit questions if maybe if you're not there and you have something you want answered. Uh, I would certainly be happy to answer as many questions as I can get to during that event. So, yeah. Um, we'll also be recording and streaming it, so if you can't make it, um, you'll be able to come back, go back and watch it later. Um, so there is that. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on, um, you guys have been great about it and I really haven't seen much of a problem with this. Um, is, uh, moose runs. Um, obviously, we've talked quite a bit about them already tonight, about teams that are offering them in the guild. Um, just as a reminder, um, we would prefer if you did not sell them within the community. Um, there's just that barrier of entry that that price tag sort of creates. And, uh, we're trying to keep things a little more open and friendly in the guild. Um, and I don't want to see that barrier of entry start cropping up. Um, it's certainly something that we can discuss for future things like the moose, um, in future content patches. Um, but for right now, please, um, don't sell moose runs within the community.
Well, plus, plus, I mean, just, there are enough teams that are giving them out. I, I think that within the CTR Guild community anyway, that, um, it's really kind of a non-deal. Just cause we're getting, it seems like we're getting like 100 people a moose, uh, every week or so. I mean, with all the different teams that are doing it, so.
Yeah.
There are a lot of people getting their, getting their mises right now.
Yeah, and we'll have some more teams, I think, starting in the new year. Um, I'm trying to, uh, I'm trying to convince my team, so Stoic Raid Team, you're, you're on. Um, let's start getting some people, let's start helping some people get moose, uh, moose runs done. Uh, yeah, so other than that, um, as always, you can always find me. Uh, I am Nate underscore CTR on Twitter, uh, Nate dot CTR at gmail dot com or CTR Raids at gmail dot com to get ahold of the raid liaison team.
Yes, CTRRaids at gmail dot com, that one for sure. Um, you can, uh, there, there are a bunch of different things. Hopefully, I'll be able to make up, uh, like a piece of artwork to put over the video for this. But, um, because there are a lot of different email addresses and stuff like that. But really, the big thing is, you can go to guild convert to raid dot com and you should be able to get in there and at least be able to email the officers and see what's going on. And we can redirect everything, so, you know. Make sure it gets to the right people, all that kind of stuff. Um, so that's, that's kind of the big thing. Um, and yeah, Nate, you kind of touched on this, uh, doing videos, right? You touched on that a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, a little bit.
Um, and that's gonna be another, another one of those big things that I'm gonna try to, try to move up the hill as we, uh, as we get toward Legion. Um, uh, one of the things that we want to do is we want to make sure that we under, we know that there's gonna be an influx of people coming in for Legion and we want to make sure everything runs as smoothly as possible. So hopefully, we'll be able to get, uh, at least a good start on some of the videos. Um, and it'll be two, three-minute videos of just, you know, talking head, uh, stuff. But, uh, hopefully, it'll be informative and informative enough and short enough so that it won't like, you know, it'll keep your attention. It'll be just enough and then you'll say, oh my God, I learned something. And be able to use that. Uh, wouldn't that be nice? Helpful videos. So we should be doing that, um, hopefully over the next few months as, as, uh, kind of the alpha and beta for Legion kind of roll along, so. Uh, let's open it up to questions though. Um, do we have any questions from either Jules or Midnight? Uh, Jules, you're in-game, Midnight, you're on Twitch. Uh, do we have any questions from those different places, guys?
Why, yes, we do. Uh, Midnight, you wanna take them first?
Uh, sure. Um, I had people asking about, uh, kind of what Nate was just talking about. Will there be some videos to, um, help learn how to new, use the new website, how to sign up for teams, post events, etc.?
Nate?
Yeah, that's part of the, uh, of the guide we're writing up. We want to try to hit as many people as possible. Um, I'd like to get something written up because I know not everybody wants to watch videos. Um, I'd like to have a video because I know not everybody likes to read.
Reading, what's that?
West Text, what?
Right.
Um, yeah, it's something that we are working on. Um, so, it's coming, uh, soon, TM.
Right. And I see that Tavas is in the Twitch chat, so he's gonna help. He's definitely gonna help because we'll have the line-of-sight gaming guys just write up the two or three-minute tips for, for all of us. So, you're set. Uh, other questions?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple suggestions slash questions. Um, is there like, is there a complete list of all the teams that are running, are running the moose runs? That people can refer to to contact people? And, uh, another one, um, is there a way on the team pages, if someone is on break or on vacation, to have their avatar shaded or have it indicated so that other people know that they're on break from the game?
Hmm, so a couple different questions there. Uh, I think, we were talking about, uh, while I was having technical issues, we were kind of talking a little bit about how we wanted to deal with the different teams that are doing moose runs. And I think, um, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna, uh, talk, how did you guys want to do it? Cause you, you were talking about it. Nate, how did you want to do that?
Um, yeah, we'll work with Dairies. We'll work on getting a list of teams together that are offering moose runs and what the best way to contact them is. Uh, and we'll try to get something up on the website. Um, I can also try to request a way for teams to note that they're on hiatus. Um, I think that would, that would help us as raid liaisons a lot and I think it would also help, uh, help you guys when you're trying to apply to teams.
Yeah, I mean, it could, it could be just something as simple as like, uh, like an, like, on, you know, active or on-break switch. You know, just on or off button.
I have a, I have a suggestion along those lines about the moose runs from, uh, Zristina.
Okay.
Um, and said, uh, I wonder if there could be a list of people that want or need the moose with times they're available and then the different raid teams can look at it and grab the people that way.
I think it would be better the other way around because then that way, because most of these guys, most of these teams are offering it for, for free. You know, it's kind of like, hey, no, our team is getting together at this time. If you want, you can come join us. We'll have open spots or whatever. I think, um, I think it'll depend on what's going on. But usually, moving those 20 people is a lot tougher than moving the five that want the moose. You know what I mean? Or the 20 or however many are going through. So, but, um, again, I think it's, I think it'll be, I think those teams that are doing moose runs, if you are doing them, please let us know about it by contacting CTROfficers@gmail.com. Uh, and from there, uh, we can send it to, to Tur Arts and Nate and Dairies so that all three of those guys kind of know what's going on and, uh, and get it on the guild page somewhere uh, and, and try to make a real list out of it so that you guys know what's going on. So, we'll, we'll work on it.
Real quick, I actually just want to back up. There is a way for teams to mark themselves as inactive on the, uh, on the raid builder.
Oh, there is? Cool.
There is. Um, you just set your team status to inactive and it will, you, I believe it will still, it will hide you from the main list. Um, and when you're ready to come back, you can just reactivate your team, no problem.
Cool. It's like they were thinking about it when they built it. It's amazing. Way to go, Macus and Dairies and everybody that was helping out with that. The raid builder, by the way, if you guys haven't checked that out, it's super sweet. Um, and, and, uh, you know, it's just, I can't wait for those videos, Nate, so that I know how to use it.
Yeah, me too, because I could use some guidance on how to use it sometimes too. Since it took me five minutes to figure that out.
Uh, any other, uh, questions out there?
I have another one.
Sure.
From Twitch. Uh, someone was asking if there's a way to help out the teams that are doing this, such as contributing gold towards their repairs or, well, I mean, other than the guild repairs or, you know, other, you know, maths or things like that.
Uh, most of these guys just kind of do it and they're, they're geared enough so that they don't really, you know, so that it's not really a bother to them or anything like that. Um, you can definitely talk to those raid leads and, and see if they need anything. Um, those, well, the ones that are helping you out, that's totally cool if, I, but again, I mean, that's, that's gonna be on a team-by-team basis. That's not gonna be something that the guild will say, yes! You know, we're just happy that people are offering it, so. Uh, Jules, you have a question from, from in-game?
I has bunches.
Okay, let's get to one of yours.
Okay, from Ursellus asked, can we donate gold to help cover some of the repair bills for the teams that are helping people get the moose mount?
Well, and that's, that was just the thing that we answered, kind of.
That's, well, there you go.
But, I will say, as the, uh, banking manager as well.
Yes.
Uh, donations to the guild bank are 100% accepted.
All the time, because we don't have a, we don't have a choice in that matter. So if you want to, if you want to donate to the guild, that's always an option. We don't need, when are we gonna run out of funds, Nate? It's sometime in 2018, 2017?
Yeah, I think, I think we're up to, uh, sometime in February of 2018, so. It's a ways off, but it's still, it's still coming, so if you do want to, if you do want to donate, I'm not gonna say no.
2018 is just a mere couple of years away, so, you know.
It'll be five.
Oh, boy, yes, we'll be five, we'll be, we'll be celebrating our fifth anniversary and being broke. That'd be awesome. Alright, Jules, what's, another question?
Yep, um, this one's for Tur Arts. Any plans for more social non-rating slash dungeon events in-game like naked gnome runs, etc.?
Um, I know I have event planners, especially some of my new ones, who are definitely up for that. Um, right now, all of our forces are kind of direct at the anniversary, but we do have fun events like that. I know Last Year Eve hosted a naked run through Sunwell, that was pretty fun. Um, so just watch the guild calendar, seriously, convert to raid, or wait, guild convert to raid dot com, that's what I'm supposed to say now. That's where you can go, that's where we post all of our events. Um, but yes, we do have some ideas for some kind of fun, silly little events.
As always, right? I mean, there's, there's always seem to be popping up, uh, from here, here, here and there. Uh, so, yeah, just watch that calendar. Guild convert to raid dot com, that's it. Uh, Jules, you got another one?
Yep, from Tommen. He said, can we get someone to monitor and retweet things from the at CTR Guild Twitter again? That account seems rather dead again lately.
Well, we're watching it. Um, it's just, you know, depends on when you're hitting us up. If you, if you tweet at CTR Guild, somebody will see it, probably me. And we'll figure out if it's something that we want other folks to know about and retweet it. Uh, and I know that, uh, Nate, you're kind of using that, uh, Tur Arts, you're kind of using that, right?
Yep.
A little bit here and there, so, uh, be watching out for it.
It's hard for me to catch things, obviously, because I work nights, so my hours are very different.
Yeah, it's, it's all good, it's all good. And there's, somebody has an eye on it, so. If there's something specific that, that we're missing that you want us to pay more attention to, uh, write to us. CTROfficers@gmail.com or, or, uh, give us a DM on Twitter. Uh, anybody else have a question out there?
I've got one last question for you. Billy Piper would like to know, can we change the name of the sub-guild CTR Mobis to CTR Mises?
Nope.
Oh, you were supposed to say along.
That's an easy one, no! It costs money, no!
You're welcome, Billy.
There you go. Uh, let's see, do we have any other questions from Twitch?
Uh, yes, one other one so far. Um, the age-old question of, will we ever see CTR expand outside of WoW as a community?
As a community, kind of. Uh, so get this, we are right now, uh, on the CTR Show, we are experimenting with a thing called Discord. Discord is, a lot of raid teams are going to Discord because it combines, uh, what we like about chat and what we like about, uh, Mumble. Uh, you know, chat programs like GroupMe, um, and it also has a voice thing on it too, like Mumble. Uh, and so we are testing it out right now for the show. And if you guys want to be a part of that, I guess you can, because we like you guys. Um, and you can go to, let's see, the easiest one is probably going, well, let's do it two ways. So you can do CTR dot discord dot GG or discord dot convert to raid dot com. Ugh, it can be tough. Uh, but you can go to either one of those and, and you'll get into our Discord group, uh, and you can check it out for yourself. However, this is not going to be an official guild thing. Only because one of the great things about Mumble is that we can control that a little bit more with, with the passwords and stuff like that. Uh, and we can kind of maintain the expectation of what the CTR Guild means to folks, right? So, so we can kind of make sure that, I, I don't know, it's just, it just seems a little bit easier to, to control and make sure that it lives up to the, the guild policies and standards that we've set forth. So, but if you want to join the Discord thing, you totally can, that's a part of the show. And it's, yeah, you know, it's this thing. Um, so we're gonna be doing, we're, we're looking at switching into that full force for the guild, not quite yet. Um, and Tur Arts is doing, uh, some, and the events team are doing some wonderful things, trying to get people to play other Blizzard games. Um, and that's kind of where we're gonna start. So, so there. Uh, we won't be doing a Horde Guild, we won't be doing an EU Guild, sorry. Uh, these, these are things that are just, um, extremely hard. Extremely hard to do and it doesn't, it doesn't, um, it doesn't make us all play together. It doesn't help us all play together, the same game, together. Uh, especially raiding, which is what, you know... uh, especially raiding, which is what, you know, Convert to Raid Guild. We, we raid.
It's in the name.
Yeah, it's in the name. So, uh, so there's all that stuff. Um, and, uh, if you're, by the way, if you, if you are, if you do, do want to go into the Discord, uh, stuff, they have, uh, the browser stuff, and then they have their own app for, uh, your mobile device or for your PC or Mac. Um, I would suggest getting that app and not going through the website, uh, only because it does more stuff. So, that's my suggestion. Um, anything else? Any other questions?
I have two more.
Okay.
From Twitch.
Okay.
That Nate said he would address. Um, "Quick explanation on how new people can try to join raid teams, please."
All right, so, first thing you're gonna do, you're gonna go to guild convert to raid dot com, uh, up in the, about in the top right corner, there's a little login box. Um, you're just gonna log in with your username and password. Uh, it's the same as you use on the CTR forums, it's the same one you used when you sign up. You don't have to register for a new one. Um, log in there, and then, once you're logged in, click on the My CTR link. Uh, that'll take you to your profile. Uh, from there, there's an option on that page that says, um, there's a green button that says, "Find Teams" or "Find a Raid Team."
Find a Raid Team.
Um, click on that button, and you can search all of our raid teams. Um, you can find teams that, based on what days and times you're available, what content you want to run, uh, stuff like that. Um, you'll be able to see all of the teams in the Guild. You'll only be able to apply to teams that are actively recruiting. Um, so the raid leader will have to have enabled that. But, um, yeah, that's how you get started there. And again, that'll all be covered in the, uh, guides and videos and stuff that are, that'll be coming up, uh, early next year.
And then, just, uh, just for clarification, you can still pop into those teams and see who the raid leader is, and then maybe send them a tell or something like that if, if you're interested in their team, right? I mean, in-game. You, like, you can take that information, go in game, and then say, "Okay, these guys are raiding at nine tonight, so, uh, let's get in there and, you know, and I'm gonna just whisper him and just say, 'Hey, if you're ever looking for somebody, let me know, 'cause I'm totally there,' right?"
Yeah, that is, um, you know, as long as you're being respectful and polite and not being disruptive, um, that's always encouraged.
Yeah, cool. And you said you had another question there, Midnight?
Uh, yes. Um, in Legion, challenge dungeons are going to be a major component for non-raiders, so any chance we can get some forums for that or other group setups like in raids?
Yeah, I want to get that, uh, added in to the raid builder, um, so that we can, you can find challenge mode teams as well. Um, and that obviously is gonna take some work from the IT team and to try to figure out how to best implement that.
Yeah.
Um, because I want to do the same thing for, um, dedicated battleground groups and, uh, stuff like that, so that we can, uh...
And I, I think that's just a...
We can better serve.
Yeah, I think that's just a, I think that's a real great point of expansion for, for a lot of things, not just WoW either, because you've got, you know, Heroes and Overwatch, which are gonna be small-team, uh, games as well. So, I mean, that's, that can, that can be a part of it, maybe. Who knows? But, uh, yeah, building in some of those small-team, uh, rosters and stuff like that, that's, that'll be cool.
I have another one, too.
Okay.
Um, real quick, I just want to, I want to make mention, um, since we have a broad audience here.
Sure.
Um, and I haven't seen it be, being used quite as much as it has in the past. Um, guys, remember the CTR LFG channel is still a thing. Um, and that's a great way to find, um, other people to run content with you as well. Um, I know the group finder has kind of supplanted that a little bit. Um, but you can also use that channel as well, and I'd love to see some more teams advertising in there. I'd love to see some more, uh, people looking for more people in there. I mean, Guild Chat's fine, but we have that channel out there as well.
Right. And yes, it's a public channel, so please, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's actually perfect, because I know a lot of people on the server are actually using that channel for their, for their teams outside of our Guild, which is great, because we've got people all, all the time that are kind of looking for teams. And, and if we were create, we're creating a, uh, good experience for them, hey, guess what? Maybe you'll be able to, uh, get a new player for your team. They might not be in the Guild yet, but they can always join, so that's cool. Uh, we have another question?
We do. Um, this one's for Tur Arts from Glenlock. "Will there be any meet and greets coming up? I'm newer to the Guild, and I'd like to meet more people."
Um, as far as meet and greets like in real life go, um, I know with the WoW movie, people are doing stuff. As far as the ones where we do in Mumble, yes. Um, next one will be during that anniversary week. I just haven't decided on a date yet.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, and usually it's been about once a month, right? Or so?
Um, yeah, that's the goal. Lately, we've had some, some hiccups with BlizzCon and all that stuff, but yeah, that's, that's the idea. 2016, that's the plan.
Yeah, Q4 gets a little busy with BlizzCon and the holidays and all that kind of jazz, so, yeah, it gets a little busy, so, um, I, yeah, I think, uh, it's, it's actually a really great time to, to, you know, to have our anniversary after all that stuff, so that we can just have some fun together as a Guild. That's it.
Agreed.
Uh, any other questions out there at all?
I'm done.
Okay. Cool.
I'm done as well, I think.
Awesome. Uh, well, if you do have questions, you can always email ctrofficers@gmail.com. Uh, make sure to check out all the stuff that we offer you at guild convert to raid dot com. That's where all the Guild stuff is. Just log in, uh, and, you know, play around, see what, see, you know, check out the raid builder. Check, make sure to, you know, try to find a team. Uh, it's really cool, even if, even if you're not really looking right now, you can go in there and try to find a team and, and check it out, 'cause the raid builder is super, super cool. Uh, and I, I still don't know everything that it does, but I'm amazed by it. Um, and let's see, what else? Uh, you can follow CTR Guild on Twitter, @CTR Guild. Um, and I'm sure there are other things. There's also ctrraids@gmail.com for, to talk to Nate and the raid liaisons. Uh, there's ctrguildevents@gmail.com if you want to specifically, uh, talk to Tur Arts and the events crew. Um, and there's also, oh, yeah, CTR Officers. Is that, is, those three, right? Those are the main ones? Anything else? Did I, am I missing anything else? Nope. I think I have.
I would say, Pat, that if you guys ever want to send in compliments, uh, for the Welcome Committee, please email ctrofficers@gmail.com. We got a, a couple of them the other day, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Ed Willow got a, a couple compliments the other day. Uh, we love seeing those.
Yeah, it's awesome. It is really awesome. And, and these guys are the frontline, and they're doing, they're doing some hard work, and they're, uh, and they take the brunt of a lot of, a lot of different things, and then they tell me about it, and I go, "Oh, really? Oh, sorry, sorry you had to go through that, bud." So, uh, you know, 'cause stuff happens. It's, that's just the way it is. Um, let's see, what else can I say? Uh, remember the Guild credo? And what is that Guild credo, Spencer?
Unity, teamwork, and respect.
That is right. Not respect. Not like a, respect.
Did I cut myself off?
Not, not respect. You don't have to, all of a sudden...
You don't have to do that every time you join the Guild.
You don't have to change over to balance and then to feral. Mm-mm.
That's right.
You don't have to do that. It's fine. Uh, but yeah. Uh, and I think that is it. So, thank you guys so much for joining us tonight, and I hope that you learned some stuff. I hope that this was cool for you. I see that our chat room and Twitch is going crazy, and, and I know that in-game is always crazy, so, um, I hope that you're having a lot of fun with us, and I look forward to seeing you throughout the holidays and into 2016. Thank you, guys, so much, and, uh, take care, everybody. Bye-bye.